But we are so excited to have you both here. The 10 candidates who signed up to run in District One this year brought a wide range of perspectives, many of them motivated by personal experience with big projects going on in District One, really highlighting how much is going on in San Antonio right now and how critical it is to bring residents along when crafting a vision for the city's future. District One includes much of downtown, the economic engine of a city that's poised for a new MBA arena and entertainment district, a new minor league baseball stadium, and the city's first bus rapid transit route on San Pedro Avenue. The district is also made up of many dynamic neighborhoods where local politics really get interesting because top of mind issues like development and preservation, density and infrastructure don't fit neatly into the partisan lanes that state and national politics do. Our two guests tonight, Sukkor and Patty Gibbons, were the top finishers on May 3rd in a field of 10, taking 49% of the vote from Ms. Kor and 18% of the vote from Ms. Gibbons. Councilwoman Kor is an education consultant who came up through the Greater Chamber of Commerce's Leadership San Antonio Program. She's represented District One since 2023 when she harnessed frustration over city construction delays to pull off a true upset victory over incumbent Mario Bravo, who was popular among neighborhood leaders at the time. Ms. Gibbons is a retired land surveyor and former Greater Harmony Hills neighborhood leader who served on the City Zoning Commission. Though previously part of the more conservative City Council District Nine, her neighborhood was among those that shifted into this district during redistricting in 2022, creating some new dynamics in a traditionally progressive district. We're going to kick off tonight's debate with a one minute and 30 second opening statement from each candidate. From there, when the moderator asks a question, you'll have a minute and 30 seconds to respond. And when I ask a follow-up, you'll get one minute to respond, or if rebuttal is needed, also a minute. Quick note from the crowd, this debate is exactly one hour, so please keep your applause to a minimum so we can get through as many questions as possible. All right, we did a quick coin flip before this, and so Ms. Gibbons is going to go first with your opening statement. You have 90 minutes, 90 seconds.
90 minutes, I could change the world. Thank you, TPR and San Antonio Report and Trista Berry for making me very, very nervous now to stand here and talk about District One. But I think I can, I think I can get over that. I'm Patty Gibbons. My husband and I moved here to San Antonio in 1982. We came with one daughter. And when we first came here, my brother lived here. It was beautiful. It was sunny, big sky. We came from Ohio. It was a blizzard the day we left. And it was where we were going to plan our dreams. We thought, this is where we could build. We could build our family. We wanted six children. And who knows where it would go? It was booming at that time, if any of you remember, 1982. But then we fell on hard times. My husband got sick, we had a car accident, and it seemed like nothing was going to go the way we really had planned it. Does that ever happen to you? But you always have hope and you always persevere through. And this, and this city talks to you in a great way. It opens up its arms. It allows you to grow. You invest, you lose investment, you get it back. It's a promised city. And I'm glad to be here for 43 years. Now, I've lived in Greater Harmony Hills, which is the very north end of District One. It is not the same District One that Sukkor got in two years ago, or before that, actually. It's a big district. It is wide. It is not just downtown. It goes all the way out to Harmony Hills and Colonial Hills. It is vast. So you have many, many voices, many, many neighborhoods. And having been a Neighborhood Association president for six years for Greater Harmony Hills, that's, am I done?
Sorry, I should have pointed out that there's the clock over there, folks.
What did the clock say?
Oh, one minute and 30 seconds.
I'm done, okay. Now I know there's a clock there.
I'm so sorry, I should have pointed that out. All right, Councilwoman Kor.
Good evening. It's been my absolute honor to serve as your councilwoman for the last two years. My team and I have learned so much. We've accomplished a lot, but there's still so much work to do. We have three main priorities. One is improved infrastructure in all of our neighborhoods. Two is keeping our neighborhood safe and affordable for all residents. And three, make sure everyone has access to a thriving park and community center. So to improve instruction, if y'all remember St. Mary's and Broadway, we came in and put a policy in place to ensure that city, CPS and SAWs all know what's underground before they start construction. Believe it or not, that wasn't happening before. We also started a streetlight fund where residents could tell us where do they feel unsafe walking to create more streetlight. That was a play off of what Councilwoman McKee Rodriguez started a few years ago. On top of that, we launched an ACS fencing pilot where we really worked with residents to help keep pets on their properties and teach them about the benefits of spay and neuter. Finally, we engaged 1,300 residents to put input on our San Pedro Springs Park, which is the 10th most historic park in the country, and that park's going to have a lot of benefits coming to it. But there's still so much work. We need a citywide sidewalk plan so that every single resident has access to a walkable neighborhood, which is not the case in District One today. We also need to make sure that we are ensuring that every single person can afford to live in District One. We need more affordable housing and we need to be able to allow new families to come in. And lastly, we need someone who can work with our council colleagues to push District One's needs forward in the 2027 bond. And that's why I'm asking for your support today.
All right, something that we heard over and over from residents in candidate, residents and candidates in the District One forums this year was frustration with city projects that they either didn't want, weren't consulted about, or didn't feel like their feedback was accepted on. In a district with so many city shaping projects, what needs to change in the public input process to make residents feel heard? Starting with Councilwoman Kor.
This is the biggest issue that we are facing right now in District One, which is why we actually just put forward a city, a council request last week in partnership with Councilwoman Adrete Gavito and Councilwoman Castillo to do an audit on our Public Works Department. I believe in order to move forward, we have to understand what is happening, where are the brakes in the system? So we looked at, we asked the city manager to use an external reviewer to look at all of the projects that have been done, which ones were done on time and on budget, which subcontractors did we have to go back and redo work on, and, to your point, communication. How did we actually communicate with residents? Because so often on projects, we were receiving information that the project had already started. So we can't communicate that to residents if it already been started. So one of the things that, to answer your question directly of how do we continue to engage constituents on the work, one, we need to think more innovatively about how we're actually connecting with our residents. We don't have a CRM, so I couldn't text all of the residents on the rain when there was a massive issue from Public Works immediately. We need to have a two-way communication stream with all of our residents that residents can opt into to ensure privacy is, is there, but we need to get more innovative around actual community engagement with our residents.
I'm sorry, what's a CRM?
Oh, I'm sorry. Customer Relationship Management System. It's like a Salesforce-type system. Right now, city office, city council offices use IQ, but we need one that can relate for, it can, it can go through all offices and the city.
Okay. Ms. Gibbons, same question.
Well, I think that a councilwoman is a representative, and I think that councilwoman has to be present. They need to be where you are. They need to hear what you have to say. And I think they also have to kind of feel your pain. You have issues and they impact you. We're here to serve you. If you're a servant leader, then that's where you'll be. As a Neighborhood Association president, we have meetings, Neighborhoods Associations in this district, and there are quite a few, and they meet quite often. Councilwoman needs to be there. She needs to be there at the beginning and meet you. She needs to be there during the program so she knows what the issues are. They're different from every neighborhood. And she needs to be there afterwards. So you'll have, when you have questions and you need to talk one-on-one, you're there. Does that sound like too much work? Does that sound like maybe that's too less innovative? I think that's the reality. People have issues and people have pain about those issues. If you are not there, then their voice is never heard. If you are not there to hear the voice, then you're really not being very transparent. Transparency starts right there. We have not, I gotta watch my little clock here. We did not have a good inner communication with the TOD and the, and the Via Bus Line. In fact, there's construction happening already and no one's been notified. So we're still, I don't know what innovation we're waiting to happen. You might just want to show up and be there.
And quick follow-up for each of you on this one. Councilwoman Kor, one of your opponents in this race said she felt like residents in her neighborhood had to live on guard from city projects that they didn't know about until they were happening. You've talked about the need to keep the city moving forward for the greater good. Do you think that the bond program is serving its purpose if many of the residents, residents closest to the projects don't want them?
I do think the bond program is serving its purpose in terms of actually investing in our neighborhoods. Some of the bond projects that we've had, for example, in Beacon Hill, which is where I'm from, is Capitol Avenue. If you've ever driven down Capitol Avenue, it felt like a roller coaster with a pothole on every single block. And that project wouldn't have been possible without the bond. However, did the communication go out well for that project? Absolutely not. And so is there work to be done to actually improve the way we are executing our bond projects 100%? And that goes back to why we actually pushed the CCR forward. We need to think really holistically as we bring on this new, new Public Works Director since ours currently is retiring. How can we create a Public Works Department that's responsive to the community and, most importantly, communicating on a daily basis?
And Ms. Gibbons, you've had two, you brought up the TOD already, the Transit Oriented Development Fight, but also the, the redistricting fight. That you helped fill those meetings with many, many residents and they didn't end up going the way that you wanted them to. How would you have had the city do those input sessions differently?
Yeah, there was, there was no interaction between the board on the redistricting. There was interaction on the TOD down at Development Works with Catherine Hernandez. So there was at least a committee set up and there was interaction happening. But it came down to one vote. And I'm very offended that when that vote happened at the dais, that the councilwoman was so gleeful that everybody was so involved and this is exactly what you all wanted and it wasn't what any of us wanted. It's a $480 million project on a bus line that already currently exists. We're just going to fancy it up. We're going to take away some lanes and make you ride the bus, I guess. But it just was not, the discussion was never, ever there between the residents and the councilwoman. She wasn't present. And that's the difference between her and I. When you have worked in the community as long as I have on boards and commissions and in neighborhood associations, you're communicating one-on-one with people, whether they are on your side and they think like you do, or whether they don't. But if you don't have that interaction with, with everyone, then how do you ever really come to a good conclusion of what's good for everyone unless your surveys seem to do that for you?
Construction delays like the one on St. Mary's Strip were a key issue in the last District One race and remain a big concern to many residents and businesses, even as the city has taken many steps to address it in the past two years, including auditing the Public Works Department's communication procedures and hiring a new public, new Public Works Director is still in the works. What still needs to be done to fix this department? Starting with Ms. Gibbons.
I was, okay, I think I got that question.
What still needs to be done to fix the Public Works Department?
Oh, you know, the Public Works Department, all the departments have changed so many times over the years. When we ran land surveying and I would take drawings downtown, we actually had one guy in one department, he had a little jar on the table and it said, send Willie to camp. It was, put a little coin in here. That was the conversation you would have with Willie if you wanted to get something through. That has changed a lot. But I have not participated in Public Works enough to, to give a good answer to that. I thought Rozzy did a very good job. I appreciated Rozzy being there for us when we were asking for the parking lot over at the Barcola Library and pursued that along with us and worked. But we had that conversation with Rozzy. But I do would say that, I gotta watch my clock again, that it has to be that conversation again. We did have an issue in Harmony Hills. We reached out to Public Works and they would pretty much write us off, no, we're not approving that. Well, could you come out and explain to us why you're not approving that? Because we're not seeing what you're seeing. No, we don't do that. Well, how about I ask the supervisor? So I had to go above the supervisor. It's a lot of work when you're in a volunteer job and I got to seek down these employees and supervisors to get something done. Of course, I didn't get anything done through the office of the city council. So I, that conversation, I don't know why. I've seen it change over the years. We were in business 30 years and worked with the city departments and it just has become a more and more closed-door policy, and I'm not sure why that's happening. So I don't know if that's, if that's higher up. I don't know if that's management with, I don't know. But it needs to change.
And Ms. Kor.
So we had a constituent service rep from another office come to our office to listen to our infrastructure director, which we hired when we got elected because this was such an important issue, answer calls. She has currently 120 cases open just on infrastructure alone, which he mentioned to us was how much he dealt with in the last year. The amount of cases that we have that come through every day about my sidewalk is broken, the soil in District One is so old, it's eroding. And I have a previous team member here who knows all the challenges that we've really faced with infrastructure. So to answer your question, there's two things we need to do. One is we need to completely reset how we do the IMP. Right now, the IMP is our five-year street and sidewalk management plan. And what they do is they try to make sure that every district on average has a score of 80 for each of the streets and sidewalks. But that doesn't actually explain why one street gets picked over the other, even if one street got repaved about five or six years ago and the other one has it for 30 years. They can't distinguishly tell you, this is why we're picking this street. And that is the problem. We have to have a long-term plan that addresses all of our failing streets and our sidewalks because it's not fair for me to say, hey, you're not on the list for the next five years and I've got no funding and nothing to do to help you. That's not a sufficient answer anymore. And so that's the one thing we're really going to push with our city manager and our new Public Works Director.
And to follow up on this with each of you, starting with Ms. Gibbons, something that we hear a lot and have heard a lot in this race is it's a four-year term, but this district has been very concerned about getting people up to speed and training a new council member. How would you work to get up to speed on issues like holding stakeholders accountable on the construction issues?
Yeah, just to kind of address that, I would say back in about 1995, 98, when we would put plats through the city, it would take us three months, $3,000. But today, there are so many agencies and layers just on getting a recorded plat through and the amount of money that goes through it. So I, to go back to answer that question, I think the first question you asked, I think that the layers have gotten too much, too thick. You put way too many restrictive policies or requirements on developers, on small developers. In land surveying, we had large developers, we had small ones. It was the small ones that would get hurt the most. We'd have a grandmother come in who's got two tracts of land or a tract of land, she wants to divide it into two, and the amount of hoops and money that she would have to go through, especially even today, she would just drop the whole project. So the, the layering of too much restrictions on people who want to get something done, I think has to be pulled back.
And Ms. Kor, this was a big part of what got you elected in the, two years ago. Do you think that you've made good on the promises?
We've definitely made progress. The memorandum of understanding that we passed with subsurface utility engineering in partnership with some of our communities, I actually learned, I just got to say this because I learned how to say subsurface utility engineering in Spanish. It's en energía de subsuficiales utilidades. And, you know, we talked about it so much because it was so important. And anyhow, so we feel like we've really made progress on that front, which will help us get projects done on time and on budget. But is there more work to do? Absolutely. Like I mentioned, the plan that I just want to put in place for our overall IMP and sidewalk plan is something we're going to focus on.
District One is poised to get the city's first advanced rapid transit route, known as the Green Line, along San Pedro Avenue. Along that route, the city is paving the way for denser development aimed at facilitating car-free lifestyles through Transit Oriented Development, a plan that was approved in December. Councilwoman Kor, you signed on to a council resolution request, a council consideration request calling for the creation of a Transit Oriented Development Plan. And Ms. Gibbons, you organized against it. I'd like to ask you each about this project, starting with Ms. Kor. You said you are proud of supporting this project as a way to keep San Antonio moving forward. In what, in your mind, what are the benefits and benefits of this project that are worth overruling the desires of some of your constituents who live nearby?
Absolutely. So like I mentioned in my intro, one of the biggest priorities that we have right now is making sure District One continues to stay affordable. And when we have transit, we have, San Antonio has never had mass transit. It's been one of the biggest things that we've never been able to do and it truly continues to segregate our communities. And that's why we needed the transit line and then creating development around that is important. So this framework is so critical because it will now allow developers to see, okay, I can create this building here that includes regulations that already has input from the community. So the historic overlay, it must stay. Anytime you're building anything in a historic neighborhood, you have to go to HDRC and get their approval. There has to be setbacks. So you can't build a six-story building next to a home. All of those considerations were taken into effect, but now developers have a bigger incentive to say, okay, this is what's possible here. Maybe I can build a mixed-use building here. Maybe I can build a four-plex and then the residents that are living there can get on the bus, go town-to-town and enjoy all the amenities that we're building downtown.
And Ms. Gibbons, you fought hard against this project and lost, but would represent many residents who want to see San Antonio become more transit bike and pedestrian friendly. What do you have to offer them?
I'm not sure I understand the question. What do you mean, what do I have to offer them?
What about the folks who wanted this project? You would represent a lot of people who want to see San Antonio become more pedestrian friendly.
Anyone that wants the project, you can ride your bike, you can take a walk on a sidewalk, you can get on the bus. It's already there. But this is $480 million for a beautiful bus. You can call it rapid transit and you must call it that because you wanted the federal dollars to make this happen and you wanted those federal dollars before that window closed. That was the whole reason it got pushed. This was a zoning overlay that never got any approval from 200, the people in 200 feet because it was a corridor. There's never been a corridor. There are Todd notes, not a corridor. So you're developing something totally off the map that, from any other city. I looked and now all of a sudden you don't get any approval from 200 feet from that, from neighbors. And now they've just got to grapple and, and hope that it doesn't happen in front of their, or in their backyard. And then you got to take the time to go down to zoning to fight for it. And you know what happens at zoning? Everybody's going to listen to you really nicely and they may ask you a little question or two, but then they're not going to approve what you, you don't want approved and it goes back to city council and they could, they could approve it either way, for or against. So the fight isn't, isn't real. You might think the process is there, but the fight isn't real. And these are people who have assets. They bought a house, that's their asset. How is it going to get affected when so much development happens along the backyards of their houses? You are gentrifying neighborhoods that said, don't do it.
Ms. Gibbons, with your conservative background, you might have some more connections than previous council members in this role. Would you use your position as a council member to lobby against some of the federal funding for those transit projects?
Well, let's have a little accountability of where the money's going to begin with. I saw a lot of salaries happening all of a sudden with VIA. So let's have a little accountability there. I don't, nobody has any laid-out plan of when, when and what anything is going to happen. I just got a phone call from a, from a business who says they're already starting to plow outside my door. So how long is that going to take? Where's the plan on that? I, I'll take that back. There are the strip maps. You can go over and look at them on your free will. But that's never been mentioned by Sukkor in any newsletter of hers. We have no idea of this unless you're a good investigator, unless you got a lot of oomph in you like I do and you go find it yourself, you'll never find it. So you're just sitting there waiting for something to happen that you didn't want to happen. I don't know if I answered that question. You asked, how would I help?
Whether you would use your connections to lobby against federal, to convince people to not fund these federal projects, these transit projects?
I don't know if I really have any good connections. I think it's a done deal.
For most council members, Project Marvel is a question of resource allocation, a roughly $4 billion project that could bring in some private investment and eventually generate city revenue through a convention, through convention center upgrades at the expense of maxed-out visitor taxes and potentially bond money that could be used elsewhere in the city. But for District One, this project also comes with some quality of life concerns for the residents who would have to deal with years of construction and increased visitor traffic around their neighborhoods. To each of you, I'd like to ask, what do you see as the pros and cons of this project? Starting with Ms. Gibbons.
This is the Marvel project? Okay, here's, I mean, there's no communication here. There's, never has she mentioned it in a newsletter, so I'm just going to go off of what I know from having been at La Vaca Neighborhood Association where they did a presentation, Lori Houston did that. And how many here even have seen the presentation other than what you've read in the newspaper? Because there is a real live presentation. It's about 45, maybe more hour long. And it's, it's very in-depth. There's a lot happening here. But the only thing that I can hear, and I think a lot of people in District One is, there went my street that I needed fixed. And there went the sidewalk again. And there went this project that I've been putting in. These things now went to the back of the line because we're going to pay attention to economic development. And we need economic development. There's no doubt of that. But why you never engaged people in District One where you have enormous leadership, they have been working on these projects, they've refurbished their houses, maintained these ancient neighborhoods, they've been a part of processes before, and you left them out of this process? So now all we get to do is answer the question, am I for it or am I against it? I can't answer that either or. I have, who has even the details of what we're about to look at and how much it's going to cost and who's going to pay for it?
The question was actually, what are the, what do you see as the pros and cons of the project that are you necessarily for or against it? Are there any pros or cons that you immediately see that you'd like to highlight?
I, well, just what I know from the project, the pros would be refurbish the Almodome and the convention and hotel. The cons are that it's going to cost a lot of money.
And Councilwoman Kor, same question.
I'm a Marvel nerd. So when this presentation first came out, I said, with great power comes great responsibility. And I truly think that's what Project Marvel is. It's a potential-to-do economic development downtown. If you were around for Final Four and you went to all the free events that were occurring, it was amazing. There was families from all over the city that were there watching the girls' games that were on for free. They were watching the music concerts. They were enjoying all the activities and it was beautiful. And we know when we activate downtown, it is going to thrive. And great cities have great downtowns. And so we have to invest in it. However, we cannot do that at the expense of our residents. And so just this week, we released our Community Engagement Plan. And so I think it's really important that I share that. I'm going to do it really quickly. It's in partnership with Abel's City and they're going to do charrettes across the city where they actually talk about, they're going to show you a map of downtown and say, what are your hopes and dreams? What would you actually engage in? They're going to do stakeholder groups where they talk to individual youth, they talk to renters to make sure they're addressing their needs. And they're going to do some presentation and communication about what's going on. Have I learned from this? Absolutely. I think we would tell you, we should have started this back in November. And that's a learning curve that I, I personally did not know at that time, that we should have pushed the community engagement sooner. But I do think the pro is bringing people downtown, making our city thriving as the seventh-largest city in the state, keeping the Spurs because that number-two pick's going to come in real handy. And at the same time, at the same time, there are challenges with our infrastructure that we cannot let forget. And we also cannot let forget that we have a huge housing problem. So affordable housing has to be right there with it. So we would only move this forward and the council will tell you, only move this forward unless all of those things are addressed.
And as a follow-up to you, what is your, in 60 seconds, what is your elevator pitch to the neighborhoods immediately around this, as why, as to why it's beneficial to them?
So for, in order to reinvest in our streets and sidewalks, we need to have an additional economic development to provide funding for those budgets. If we just move all of our dollars towards streets and sidewalks, we won't have funding for anything else like public safety. So we need that additional generation of revenue to be able to fund the needs of the neighborhoods and that's what's important. And also, the neighborhoods get an amazing amenity that they have to agree to want. And that's why it's important that we go for a vote. We have to get that community input on this and, most importantly, get a community benefits agreement so that they can see what they actually benefit from.
I'd like to ask each of you a question that have been raised during the campaign about your individual leadership styles, starting with Ms. Kor. Earlier this year, you faced a series of ethics complaints filed by an opponent, which Earlier this year, you faced a series of ethics complaints filed by an opponent, which were mostly dismissed by an outside attorney, but part of it will be looked into the ethic, by the Ethics Review Board. Specifically, the opposing campaign provided some screenshots of your communication with council staff that would appear to show your office using the council's fifty thousand dollar printing budget to communicate with D1 residents and prioritizing ones on a campaign contact list. We wanted to give you a chance to explain what happened there.
I'm not aware of what that screenshot was or what that campaign contact list was. The city rule is you're allowed to import information in. So if I go out and get a bunch of information on the campaign trail, we're actually allowed to reach out to those residents and say, hey, we heard you have an issue. What is your issue that, that is you are facing, and how can we better help you? So when someone tells me, oh, yeah, we want this pothole fixed, we're absolutely, our staff is allowed to call them and say, hey, we heard you want a pothole fixed, how can we address your pothole? So I'm not sure exactly what screenshot that's referring to, but we've always followed all the rules. My staff knows that when they are working, they're working on city issues, and then if they are volunteering, or some of them were paid on behalf of the campaign outside of city hours, that's also allowed.
Do you, as a quick follow-up to that, do you think that the council needs clearer guidelines on what is and isn't above board when it comes to the council staff doubling as campaign staff?
The, the council staff did receive a presentation about what they are and what they are not allowed to, allowed to do, and it's, again, making sure that during the time where they are representing District One in city hours, which is usually the hours of the day that they're working at in our office or at, in the field office or at City Hall, that they have to work on city issues, which, again, are addressing the needs of our constituents. But they can't be, you know, they can't be calling and saying, vote for Soc, or anything like that during their business hours. And in our, in our field office, anytime anyone called, because the constituents just think they're calling the, you know, me, so anytime anyone called and said, oh, we have something, they say, I can't give you that information, here is her cellphone, please call her directly.
And Ms. Gibbons, you previously served on a citywide panel as a member of the zoning commission representing District Nine. Councilman John Courage said he ultimately was asked to appoint someone different to that role after fellow commissioners complained that your approach was not conducive to a collaborative body. We wanted to give you some time to explain what happened there.
Well, that's an interesting conversation, because that's not what he told me. And I, he had called me, or I called him and congratulated him and said, hey, I think I need you to move on, and, and the reason, I asked him the reason why, and he said, well, Marco Barros has donated to my campaign more. That was the conversation I had with Councilman Courage, not whatever that came from. And on, when you work with land, you work with people, and people have property rights. And that has been very clear when I was on zoning. I was a Fifth Amendment person. That property right is important to them, and that was, that was what I fought for. So I had to work with the developer need, the community need, the individual need. These are, these are a lot of things that you juggle on zoning, and I think I did them very, very well, especially when you come from the premise of land already, and you've looked at land, you've walked on their land, you've found their, their property corners, you've drawn it up. I knew what that land meant to somebody, and I was trying to defend them, whether they were a developer, whether they were grandma trying to cut her one acre into two lots, or whether it was a community that saw that this would be a problem. The community was important, and it was actually then, is when I realized the power of the community. If the leaders and the movement shakers don't tap into the power of the community and the voice that they have, you'll miss the biggest opportunity you have of enriching the city of San Antonio and elevating it beyond what it is today. It's not about affordable housing, it's about afford your time to let those, those leaders speak.
And as a follow-up to that, in an exit email to fellow zoning commissioners, you said that those disagreements taught me much. We are curious whether that means that you would take a different approach to leadership serving on the city council.
That was a statement of mine, or what?
Yeah, in an exit email to the zoning commissioners when you were cycling off, said that the disagreements that y'all had had to, taught you very much.
Oh, always. I mean, you have to have both sides to, you have to come and listen to both sides. And it, not only that on zoning, but that on Neighborhood Association. You have all kinds of voices that you're listening to, and then coming into District One and working with other neighborhood associations who aren't like-minded like Greater Harmony Hills is, who are a little more on the conservative end, were on the north end. So we had to listen to what were their takes on things. It's really a wonderful map that you make, if I could use that, that description, or puzzle, however you want to look at it. If you could use all of those, and if you're a person that is willing to come to the table, and I am, and in my first, when I ran, my first time I ran, I went out to neighborhoods or communities or politics or whatever. I went everywhere and learned everything. I was not afraid, I'm still not afraid. You want to tell me how that feels, I'll tell, I'll listen. I know, listen very well.
This is a nonpartisan race, but you have each been backed by partisan groups, Ms. Core by the Bear County Democrats, and Ms. Gibbons by the Republican Club of Bear County. This district has historically chosen progressive candidates, but it added northside neighborhoods during redistricting and some vocal pockets of more conservative voices have emerged this election cycle. I'd last, like to ask, ask each of you how you would work with residents who don't share your political views, starting with Ms. Core.
Yeah, so I've often said, as the job of a city council person, we have to represent all of our residents, regardless of what their partisan beliefs are. And I actually think it's beautiful that we don't have partisanship for city council because potholes, they don't know whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, they just know they need to be fixed. And so I think it's really important that we continue to work with all of our residents. I've always shown up to communicate with them, and I will continue to do that. I do believe it's important that we are supporting a District One that's moving forward in the right direction, but the data will show you from the first election that in the Greater Harmony Hills region, I won that region by forty-nine percent. And so there's a lot of people that really support the work that we are doing, and will continue to be available for all of our residents, regardless of who they vote for in November. Because at the end of the day, what our job is, we are the closest, closest elected official to our residents. If anything happens in their life, I had a mom who came in who was recently divorced, and CPS turned off her electricity, and she had two kids because she was, had six months of payment that she wasn't able to make. And we were able to get that payment taken care of so that she was able to get the lights on in her house. We deal with all kinds of issues in our community and in our office, and will continue to do that regardless of what your partisanship is.
And Ms. Gibbons, same question.
I would have paid that bill myself out of my own pocket. You didn't win the Greater Harmony Hills Neighborhood Association president. You didn't win the several Neighborhood Association presidents as well. So forty-nine percent, you have to go into their neighborhoods. And when you walk the neighborhoods and you talk to them on a one-on-one, again, you're present, and you're listening, and you're having a dialogue back. I've had people close the door on me because of my politics. Are you this? Yeah, I am that. Okay, goodbye. And they close the door. But I also have had some where we've had some great discussions, and that I will have that discussion with you. I'll probably tell you, you know what you just said makes a lot of sense, and I think I can go away and use that. So does she really even present herself in any of these associations? She never did it in Greater Harmony Hills, we didn't see her for months. I think the last one, she showed up late and left early, and I've been to several of those. So when, if you're not present, and if you're not talking to people, you really aren't connecting.
As a follow-up, Councilwoman Core, the northside neighborhoods in District One formed their own neighborhood alliance that seems motivated primarily by concerns about urbanization. How are you working to assure those residents who live outside the urban core that they still have a voice at the table in District One?
I often say that District One is a microcosm of the city. It was mentioned in the introduction. But Central Business District is important, and it only represents less than ten percent of our residents. Our job is to work with all of our communities, which is a very diverse needs community. And so what I always say to those northside districts is, I know that your neighborhoods need to be safe and affordable. I know you need additional streetlights and sidewalks. There was a street, Mount Ida, that we just worked for the last several months because it's right next to Eisenhower Middle School, and kids are walking there every day, and they don't have a sidewalk. But the reason why is because their mailboxes are right at the corner, and so we'd have to work with them to move their mailboxes, move the landscaping, and we actually moved that forward and convinced them that this was a great addition to their neighborhood. So the interests that we represent are truly representative of all of our neighborhoods, and we will focus, and as a District One council person, you have to focus on all of them, and I think that's why this seat is so special.
And Ms. Gibbons, you brought on some campaign help in this race from an Austin-based firm that's known best in San Antonio for helping conservative challengers take on more moderate Republicans, such as Mark LeHood in the race against Steve Allison and Chris Schuhart in his race against Grant Moody. It's a very different brand of politics than most D resident, D1 residents have. Do you personally share the view of wanting to see more local elected Republicans replaced with more conservative alternatives?
I mean, there's no balance. There, there's a big percentage in the city that never gets heard. You just heard it when she just talked. She just told you, Mount Ida's going to get sidewalks, whether you want it sidewalks or not, this is going to happen. And so if you don't have a balance on city council, we're missing a very large sector of people. A lot of Anglos, I think a majority of Anglos, voted in District One this time around. They, they're out there, because the district is now stretched very large, it is half of downtown and it is half of the suburban. It is no longer this much and this much of the downtown. It is a different district. And if you don't have ears to hear, and I, that's what I'm kind of getting here, and I've already suspected it, it's why nine people ran against her, because you're not listening. I'm talking, and you're watching it, but you're not really taking it here. If you don't take it here, then how do you make any changes for anybody in this town unless it's just what you want and you only?
And Ms. Core, you raised more money in this race than most mayoral candidates, and also got help from a pro-business PAC that spent money on your behalf. Given that the business community has been such fans of the major projects that you've also supported, explain to residents why they should trust that you're listening to people not powerful special interests.
Absolutely. So we are literally talking to residents every single day. We've been blockwalking the whole two years, we've been off, in an office, and our doors are always open. Our number-one focus is to our residents, and I believe that we will really continue to represent our residents by listening to what their interests really are. And you know what they tell me at the doors? It's everything that I've spoken about today. It's streets and sidewalks. That's the number-one thing that they tell me about, which is why it's the number-one thing that we've been focusing on. They tell me about safe neighborhoods, which is why we need to continue to support our firefighters and our police. They tell me about, oh, how do we make sure that small businesses don't shut down? And that's why we've been working hand-in-hand with so many of our small businesses, and even doing small things like the Shop Small Holiday Guide, just to show what residents, what options they have right down the street from them. So we will continue to fight the needs for our residents because that is what we do on a daily basis. It's constituent service work is the number-one most important thing, and we'll continue doing that.
In recent years, the city council has agreed that public space, public safety is a priority, but its members often disagree on how San Antonio should fairly and effectively police its citizens, including the homeless population and mentally ill. Given the opportunity to address crime in the city budget, where would you start, starting with Ms. Core?
This is a critical issue. I'm going to start with our unhoused population because we have seen, actually in the last year, our unsheltered population decreased by a bit, but we know with these federal cuts coming, there's no telling what could happen. And so we need to double down on supports for our unhoused population, and that looks like two things. One has been working a lot with Corazon Ministries, and they do such great work for street outreach where they are building relationships that our unhoused population can actually trust the person that they want to get help from. And the second, in the long term, we have to have more housing options. If there's nowhere for these folks to go, then where are they supposed to live? And so we have to, as a member of the Housing Trust, we have to continue to build more housing, and we've got some really great projects coming up that's going to allow for unhoused folks to get permanent supportive housing. That means you get mental health counseling onsite, you get access to a food bank, and we have a project that's launching very quickly, 425 San Pedro, on San Pedro, that's going to be an example of what that could look like. So that's what we have to do for our unhoused population. And as far as public safety and crime as a whole, I think we have to dig down into why that's occurring and continue to fund more youth work. Yes, absolutely, our public, our police officers are so important, and that's why we need to keep them on the streets, addressing our critical calls. But to really get to the root of why crime is occurring, we have to dig down deep into the data and spend some more funding on our youth initiatives to really ensure we're catching them young.
And Ms. Gibbons, same, same question. Given the opportunity to address crime through the city budget, where would you start?
Well, I think we need more police. We're at sixty-one percent of our general budget is now going to police. It was at one time at sixty-seven, came down to sixty-four, sixty-three, and now we're at sixty-one. So somewhere, we're missing some money here. As far as safety goes, as an association president, that was number-one that you look out for. Mailboxes are getting opened up, your porch is being robbed, your, now your cars are getting broken into, and so we had to work closely with the safe officer. If we didn't work with the safe officer, well, we work directly with the captain or with chief of police. We had a couple shootings in Greater Harmony Hills, we never heard from Socor on that. She didn't show up to any of those public meetings that we had to understand how to address that. It's very scary when two thugs run into your antique store and hide out, waiting for a drug deal, run out with guns in their hand, the drug deal goes bad, and they shoot each other in the parking lot of seven-two-three-three Blanco Void Auction. That's a pretty stirring thing. Wasn't there when the Trinidad Agua took over the Palacio Apartments, over three hundred units? Broke out the windows, invaded it, had migrants come in, even wrote up leases for other migrants to live there until they were raided by both the sheriff and the police. So never heard from Socor on that. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm hearing you, I'm watching you talk, but it's just not really resonating that, that we're doing anything in that card. So we have to work directly with police better, and we need more money.